We have got Chris Fox here, Republican running for Clark County Council. How are you, Chris?
I'm wonderful. It's a Monday morning. We're about 35 days away from the election and I couldn't be more excited today.
Well, thanks for interviewing with us. Just to get things started out, what are your best qualifications for the position? And what's your primary motivation for running?
Yeah, you know, that's an interesting question, Caitlin, and I'll start by saying what I said in the primary. Never thought I wanted to be a career politician ever. You know, my kids are my world. And if you know anything about me, I care a lot about kids in need of services. Kids have been removed from their home, kids that aren't living their life to the best full potential. And me adopting three kids was one of the prime focuses on why I got into this race. And to be completely transparent, up until the day before the filing deadline, I was going to file to be foul for Clark County Commissioner against Jack Kaufman. And I made the last minute decision that said, Chris, you've been in real estate for 15 plus years. You understand everything that goes on planning zoning, board of zoning appeals, you know, the sewers, the drainage board. You understand all of that, how that works. The one piece that you really need to get in and understand that's a true indicator for this government is the budgetary process. And that's the one significant thing that the Clark County Council does. They manage the budget in Clark County. They are the purse strings of Clark County. And I feel like to be an effective commissioner, you gotta know where the money's coming from and how you're spending the money. And that's why I got into this race.
What do you hope to accomplish during your term if elected?
Yeah, I mean, I've said it from day one, there's three things, right? I want to restore transparency back to the Clark County government as a whole, not just with, you know, the council. I want to encourage everybody to get on the same board. This is the people's government. We are just a voice for them, right? We need involvement from our public and I'm excited to see as I attend multiple meetings, more and more people showing up and sharing their voice and what they want from their legislators and their council members. And I think transparency is number one. Number two is we've got to find a long-term strategic plan to make sure that we're taking care of our county government employees, right? Just like with any business that anybody could operate, you gotta take care of your employees. They are your frontline employees. And I think, you know, we're approaching October, right? In a couple of months, we're gonna have snow on the ground. We're gonna have the street department guys and gals out there on the streets in the middle of the night, prepping the streets for snow coming, right? While we're in our beds getting, you know, sleep overnight or whatnot, they're the ones that are out there working for us. And if they can't make a great wage for the work that they do, we're not benefiting our employees, right? So number two, number two strategy for me is finding a way. I can't go in there on day one and just give everybody a raise. We gotta do, we gotta do a study, number one, figure out, are we comparable to other municipalities across the state? How do we get them to the wages they need to be at? And find ways to find the money by tightening the purse strings and figuring out how we're gonna take care of these employees. That's number two. So number one was transparency in Clark County government. Number two is taking care of our hardworking county employees. Number three is being very physically conservative with the budget. One of the things that you'll know about me, Caitlin, is I've spent the last year all across this county, attended meeting after meeting, whether it's a commissioners meeting, a council meeting, Clark County Health Board meeting, planning zoning board, zoning appeals, the EMS subcommittee meetings. And a lot of people said to me, Chris, you're overdoing it. Why are you going to all these meetings? You're just running for council. And my response to them was simple. How can I be an effective councilman? If I don't know what's going on in the county? If I don't know what the needs of the people are, how can I sit there and make a physical decision on how to spend our hard-earned tax dollars? Because I don't know about you, but I don't wake up every day to waste our tax dollars. I want to make sure that our tax dollars are being used wisely. So if there was three things that I hope to accomplish when I walk in there on January 1st, it's transparency in Clark County government, making sure that our Clark County employees have a great living wage and benefits as well, because benefits are important as well. And number three, making sure that we're spending every dollar wisely and we're being very physically conservative with our tax dollars. Because I don't want to raise taxes.
You would only be one vote and one of seven members on the council. But would you be willing to commit to full transparency to your constituents? For example, will you support video recorded streamed meetings, including administrative meetings or any meeting outside of executive session? Making all minutes, contracts and disbursements available on the county website? And ensure distribution of packets of documents that support upcoming topics to be voted on ahead of the meeting so that constituents can engage and participate in decisions?
100% transparency. And I'll say it again, right? There is no reason why in 2024, we are not already live streaming our meetings, right? In today's day and age, our citizens can't be there at five o'clock in the afternoon, right? They may have to work two jobs just to make ends meet. They may have to get kids to and from daycare. They may have to get two kids to and from sporting activities. But in order for our citizens to truly know and have complete transparency, we need to make live streaming, recording accessible 100%, and it needs to happen now. Unfortunately, there's some miscommunications out there right now. A lot of people seem to think, yes, the governor did sign a bill last May, May 1st, to be exact. I think it was HEA 1167, I believe. And what it said to me was this, number one, Indiana is going to require you to live stream these meetings, okay? But it doesn't go into effect January 1st. And I think there's a huge mistake out there. Everybody's thinking it's gonna be January 1st. It's not. When he signed that bill into place, it said July 1st, 2025. So there's still nine months ahead of us of time that we need to be transparent. And my goal on January 1st, if it's not done by January 1st, we'll figure out a way to make it happen. If we need to fund the money, we'll fund it through an additional appropriation. But we need to make transparency number one in Clark County. If you've ever seen the Disney comic Eeyore, sometimes I feel like there's that rain cloud above us right now. And I think by live streaming some of these meetings, making transparency happen so the consumers, that residents, that are taxpaying citizens, they know what's going on in their county because they can't spend all their time going to the meetings. That's what the government officials like I, who am asking for their vote to do, is to do, is go to these meetings and be their voice. And I'm excited to be a new voice with new ideas and not afraid to say no.
Currently, public comments are constrained to three minutes each. And we're told that the council does not need to respond to or answer questions, although some members volunteer to do so. Would you be in favor of increasing the three-minute time limit and answering questions during public comment?
I think if anybody knows me, they know that I like to conversate, right? And one of the things that I learned early in my career was this thing called Robert's rules, right? And I think that's one thing that is really important that our political candidates and our political elected officials need to understand is how to run a meeting, right? You know, I've been on the board of zoning appeals in Jeffersonville. I currently serve as the chairman of the board of zoning appeals in Sellersburg. And the one thing that I know is discussion is important, right? Discussion is important. Do I think that we should have public comment that allows for three minutes of discussion and then just stop the topic? No. I think we need to find a way to change the meeting rules that allow for the elected officials to respond. Because I don't know about you, but I'm gonna respond one way or the other, because I feel like people need an answer, right? And I don't want them to wait. If I have an opinion on something or if I have a question on something, I'm gonna ask. And if I don't know, I'm gonna go find the answer and I'm gonna get back to them. Because they showed up, they deserve a response from their elected official.
How are you going to ensure the public gets the opportunity to express their desires on a particular agenda item? How will you communicate with those you represent?
So for me, I've worked in the business consulting world all my life, right? When I got into real estate over 15 years ago, one of the things that they never said was that video was gonna take over the way of our life. And as you know, social media and video has become a key part of today's society. I will communicate monthly after every council meeting with a video of what happened for the constituents to know. And if they've got questions, I'll have Q and A after my live Zoom meeting with them, because that's what I do all day long, every day with my current clients that I work with in the real estate industry. But I want to be an open door. I don't want the consumers to say, or the consumers, the residents to say, what is my council member doing for me? They've never showed up. I don't even know who they are. You know, it's funny, when I went door to door here recently, and I would say, do you know who your Clark County councilmen are or women? No. They have no idea who those people are that are spending their tax dollars every single day. And it's not anything against the current council members, because it may not be their forte. But I am very open with communication. I am very public. If you see me on the public, I'm probably talking to somebody, right? Because I want to get to know them and I want them to know who I am. But I want to communicate through video, newsletters, whatever the means are to make sure our county knows what we're doing every day and offer, you know, ask them, what's your opinion? Send me some information so that I can be informed and make decisions for you. So I want it to be a very transparent, open line communication between me and the residents of Clark County, and I will make that happen.
You've had some time to study the role and responsibilities of this position. Have you familiarized yourself with past minutes, budgets, additional appropriations, expenditures and policies for the position you're running for? And did you attend any of the budget session meetings this summer?
Yeah, absolutely. So what I'll tell you is I attend almost every council meeting, every commissioners meeting. I've attended the budget hearing meetings. It's interesting to see, when you look at something like a projected income of $36.2 million for Clark County, and you ask all the departments to come to you with their proposed budgets for 2025. It's not 36.2, it was $42 million, right? It was a six, a little over $6 million shortfall of what we projected to bring in versus what we need to expense, right? So setting in those meetings, it was a wide opening experience to say, how is our tax dollars being spent? And what departments need it? What departments can be trimmed here a little bit? How do we make this government run with what they need versus what we have coming in? And I'll tell you, I've spent numerous hours studying the budget. I've spent numerous hours looking at the rainy day fund. I've looked at additional appropriations because I'm at those meetings. And there's some cleanup to do. There's some transparency issues to be front and center. I'm one of those types of people. If you look at a P and L statement, I want to know more specifics on what the expenditures are for. If it just says travel, office supplies, technology, tell me what you need. And let's find the ways to get you the tools that you need to run your departments effectively. But I want more transparency. I want to know what you want. I'm not here to say, nope, you can't have that, but tell me what you need so we can be transparent with the Clark County residents.
And I know you have, but the question is, have you and will you attend other county and other local government meetings while in office to keep informed on planning, future growth, current issues and a general overall perspective on what other elected officials are doing that affect your decision and processes?
Yeah. And what I can say to you on that is, on November 6th, my campaign does not stop. That doesn't mean that Chris rolls up his sleeves and says, oh, I won the election. I don't gotta attend any more meetings, because that's not me. I want to be that informed councilman that knows what's going on in the county. And I want the county, the county workers to know that I'm here for them. When they see their representatives showing up to their department meetings, when they see their representatives out and about supporting their functions they're putting on, puts a smile on their face. They feel like that they're included. They feel like they're valued. And that's one thing that I feel that I can bring to the table is make our employees and our elected officials in other capacities, appointed, elected or whatever, know that we truly care and that we're not here sitting here just cutting up your budget and telling you how much you can make and what you can spend, but we truly care about what they're trying to accomplish.
Now, the following questions are ones that we feel are important right now to voters. Do you have any relatives, close friends or business partners serving in a government position, on a government board or as an elected official?
I have no relatives that are in any elected capacity. I have no business partners that are in any elected capacity. I've never been in politics myself. This is a, this is a new thing for me. Have I been appointed to boards? Absolutely. And a lot of the boards that I've been appointed to deal with what I've spent my life in, which was real estate. Whether it was the planning commission, board of zoning appeals, both in Jeffersonville and in Sellersburg. And then, you know, I serve on a number of nonprofits as well. Family Ark, I've spent the last nine years really digging into that industry. And for those of you that don't know, I have since adopted three kids. All were foster kids, two from Clark County, one from Floyd County. And these kids wouldn't be here today if it hadn't been for me answering that call. So kids in need of services, foster kids, kids that need a little extra help because maybe their families had some drug addiction and some challenges and that, those things are deep to my heart. Recovery is a big topic that I've been very vocal about here lately. And to be 100% transparent, why that is near dear to my heart is I lost my brother, my older brother in 2017 to drug addiction. And I know that if he had had help, he probably would still be here today. So what I want for Clark County is I want a thriving Clark County. I want a very inclusive Clark County. I want a Clark County that people are proud of, that says, there's the resources in place to help my family and we need to find out how we can help our families.
Now, similar question. Do you have any relatives, close friends, business partners in building, development or real estate fields here in Clark County?
Well, I'm gonna be completely transparent on that. I've been in real estate 15 plus years. I don't have a stranger when it comes to real estate, meaning I know a lot of these real estate agents. I know a lot of the developers, because that's what I've spent my career doing. But I don't have any financial interest with a lot of these. And if I did have a financial interest, I would be the first one to abstain from voting on something that I had any conflict of interest with.
Outside of funding the county budget, members of the council sit on various committees and boards. What is your view on industrial solar projects being placed on agricultural land in Clark County?
It's a, it's a hot topic here in Clark County. And what I'll say is, do I believe that there's a place for solar? Yes. Do I believe in a commercialized, industrialized Clark County? The answer is clear and it's no. And what I'll say to that is, I grew up, I'm an implant into Indiana. I saw the sunny side about 11 years ago and said, I want to bring, I want to come to Clark County and I want to build a family in Clark County. But if you go back into my past, my parents grew up on a farm. It was called the Fish Bowl Plantation. It's in Jefferson County, outside of kind of Okalona, Kentucky. And they grew up on the farm. They raised tobacco. They had cows. They had pigs that you name it. We would run those fields. We spent the, we spent our evenings and our summers running those fields and plants and being kids. And when I think about Clark County and all the agricultural land that we have available to us in Clark County, I don't want my kids to look out there and see solar fields for miles to come. I wanted them to look out there and say, daddy, that's a tractor. Daddy, that's a cow. And my kids are six, seven, and my daughter will be eight on October 5th. That's what they want to see. They want to see, and they want to see a world that they learn about. Orson Welles, you know, cows, pigs, animals. They want to see farm life. Because guess what? Farm life's not easy. And these farmers have worked their tail off all their life. And they still don't make as much money as a lot of people do. But guess what? If we didn't have farmers, we wouldn't have food. And we all rely on that. So to answer the question in a nutshell, do I believe there's a place for solar? Yes. And let me just be clear about that. Coming from the, from the real estate world, 100% property rights are important, right? But we have to find a fine line between what is the future of Clark County? Is it commercialized solar fields or is it rolling fields for future generations, right? You look at the comprehensive plan for 2040, right? That was adopted in 2019. Solar is not a big topic in that comprehensive plan, right? There's a lot of challenges in that comprehensive plan. That comprehensive plan needs to be updated again. There's, you know, we've seen a lot of issues in Memphis recently with developments and stuff like that. Let me be the first to say, I'm not against development. But I am against development when we don't have the infrastructure in place to support the developments. And we got a lot of work to do when it comes to our infrastructure in Clark County, from landfills to sewers, to road development, bridges. We got our work ahead of us.
What is your view on the current Clark County comprehensive plan and developing and rezoning agricultural land here in Clark County? How can we balance development with maintaining agricultural responsibility?
You know, I think coming from the real estate world and spending time both on the board of zoning appeals in Jeffersonville and now as the chair of the Sellersburg Board of Zoning Appeals, I see this every day. I see plans that come across our desk and we have to make informed decisions that affect our community. But the one thing that Chris wants to see happen is the stakeholders come to the table. Let's all sit down and have a discussion and let's figure out what the best use of the land is in Clark County? And how do we grow Clark County together? You know, we gotta grow. You know, when we think about jobs and when we think about all of our kids and as they graduate these high schools, where are they going? Where are they gonna work at tomorrow, right? Are they going across the bridge to Louisville to work and come back to Clark County? Or are they leaving the area altogether? We have to figure out how to retain a lot of our current citizens and not let them leave our area. But we also have to have smart growth. And I think smart growth happens when we set all the stakeholders down and say, what do you want to accomplish? And let's find a way that works for everybody.
River Ridge Development Authority is a quasi-governmental body who's able to bring companies into the area and conduct business without citizen input or knowledge until contracts are already signed. As an urban enterprise zone in Tiff District, they also retain generated tax income and revenue that does not go back into the community like standard districts. Do you believe there should be more continuity between River Ridge Development Authority and Clark County Government? And will you attend River Ridge Board meetings, give input and seek property tax revenue from River Ridge to fund needed infrastructure improvements?
It's a long question, but it's a valid question, right? As we all know, the River Ridge Development Authority has been around for a little while. It's brought a lot of great things to Clark County. It's brought some jobs. It's brought some higher paying jobs to Clark County. But the one thing that a lot of residents probably don't understand is, we don't benefit from the tax base from River Ridge. And what I say about that is, they maintain their own district, their own tax dollars. It's kind of like running their own little city. And one thing that I want to do, and I will, and those that know me know that I'm a little bit forceful. And if I don't get what I, what I want, I'm gonna find a way to get it. There needs to be a better relationship between the council, the commissioners and River Ridge. And I think I'm one of those people that can bring all parties together. I'm a very much a people person, Caitlin. I don't care who you are, what affiliation you are, you're a people first to me. You're a person. And I'd like to bring everybody together to the table and say, how can we work together to better, a better Clark County? And I think I can, I think I can bring the table together.
As a council member, you will not be a full-time employee of the county, but you will be offered full medical insurance benefits. Some constituents are not okay with paying for this benefit to less than full-time employees and others are okay with it. What is your position on this topic and will you be taking county insurance?
And what I'll say about this is, and I did a lot of thinking about this. A lot of the council members that are in office or planning to be in office are small business owners or they work a full-time job. A lot of those employers offer insurance. And I think if your employer can offer insurance that is manageable for your family, there's no reason to make a change, right? You're already on insurance. And if you had, you know, health issues in the past or whatnot, you know, you don't really want to change a lot of insurance because of pre-existing conditions and all that kind of stuff. And honestly, you know, your insurance currently may be better than the county's insurance. But if there's a family change, loss of job or something like that, and insurance not provided, I think, you know, I think insurance could be okay. I currently run my own businesses. We provide insurance for our employees and I pay my bill just like everybody else. And as of today, that's my intention. I still, as I'm running my companies, will manage my own insurance. You know, if there was a situation in the future that changed that my business shut down or ceased operations and I needed insurance, I might look at for alternatives, but I'm not looking for the county just to subsidize me to have an insurance policy when I already have an insurance policy.
The current landfill is nearing capacity with a series of expansions over decades. Residents complain of foul odors, traffic, wastewater concerns, a lack of accountability and oversight, and a lack of planning for rapid growth, especially River Ridge and Clark County. Have you looked at plans and funds for closure and post-closure? And what are your thoughts on solutions for handling landfill needs?
I will tell you, as of today, I don't have an answer for how we fix the landfill issue. There's a number of issues that are related to that landfill currently and how it's being managed. Yeah, we own the landfill, but we don't manage the day-to-day operations necessarily. Does it cost us a lot of money? Yes. Do I fear that something has to be done to protect future generations from this landfill? Yes. And that's one of the things that, you know, the council funds. We have to fund the money for the landfill and improvements and stuff like that. There's that old adage that says, fail to plan, plan to fail. And I would say that's probably one of the biggest challenges I've seen in Clark County is that landfill has been a problem from nearly inception. And we need to roll up our sleeves. I know it's a landfill. We need to roll up our sleeves and really get into it and figure out what the long-term plan is for this. Whether we find some new opportunities, some new ground, some new something. I don't want to see us transporting trash across the Ohio River to Louisville, but we need to find a definite solution for this soon.
Clark County has a history of contract EMS services. Due to the current EMS scandal, we have another temporary EMS contract in place. The EMS committee has been discussing a county-based municipal and/or firebase solution to our EMS deficits for years. What is your position on continuing EMS contracts versus transitioning to a government-run solution?
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a challenging question. Again, as we know, Clark County's had a lot of challenges that we're now having to fix. And I think the EMS, and I can openly speak about this. I've attended a lot of the EMS subcommittee meetings to know how things have been done with New Chapel to the transition to Heartland. Heartland was a Band-Aid fix, a quick fix and a short-term fix. It was never the intention to be the full-time alternative from day one. Could it develop into that? Maybe. But I think that the stakeholders are still looking for a long-term strategy. As you know, that EMS subcommittee was put together, was kind of, our EMA director was put into a position to find long-term solutions and bring it to the commissioners so they can make a decision on it. And the one thing that I'll tell you is, there's a place for contract services. There's a place for firebase services. There is a place for county-based services. But we have to figure out what best fits Clark County and how we're gonna fund this. And I know there's a lot of opinions out there. And I will tell you, going to these meetings, there's very few candidates that attend these meetings. There's very few elected officials that attend these meetings. And the one thing that I will tell you is, I live in Sellersburg. I was excited to see the tri-t township was trying to find alternatives early on to make sure that their territory was covered in the event that there was an EMS failure in the county. And our chief, Amir, has done a remarkable job putting an ambulance on the street. And if you look at the runs, they're covering a lot of the runs that was formerly covered by New Chapel EMS. Do I think that we have a challenge when I say, if a run, if an ambulance got toned out right now to go to Borden, and we've got six ambulances on the street and most of those are in the corridor in the municipalities of Jeffersonville and Clarksville? It's gonna take 20 minutes to get to Borden, anyway that you look at it, right? Where's the, where's the mass majority, majority of the runs? Jefferson and Clarksville. But guess what? Jefferson and Clarksville is not all just Clark County. We got residents from New Washington to Otisco to Charlestown to Borden, you name it. We've got residents that gotta be covered in the county. The one thing that I am strong about is, we have to protect our people at whatever cost it comes. We gotta be physically conservative, but I don't want to be the one that says, I'm sorry, we're not gonna fund an ambulance and they lose a loved one because we couldn't get an ambulance there, right? Is there a combination that can happen between contract service, firebase service, county-based service? I think so. But I think at the end of the day, I'm not a firefighter. I'm not a paramedic. I'm not a police officer, right? I'm a concerned citizen. And what I want to have happen is I want to have input, but I want the stakeholders that do this every day, that paramedics, the EMS people, 911, central alarm, everything. I want them to come to the table and say, this is the best solution for our county and this is the direction we need to go. Form that long-term strategy. Let's find the money to fund it in whatever capacity it is and let's go. That's what we need to do in Clark County.
Okay, property taxes seem to be increasing for most property owners in Clark County significantly for many. Some council members allege that they have no control over property taxes. What is your view on the role that council members play in property taxes? And will you have the power to make any difference in this area?
Yeah, it's a, that's a loaded question, Caitlin. And what I'll say is, again, I hate to keep bringing this up, but it's relevant. Coming from the real estate industry, we have to have a really good understanding of how property taxes work, right? A lot of people think property taxes as a whole is just going to the county government, but it's not. That your, your property tax card, if you pull out your property tax card and look at it, there's a lot of tax districts on that property card, right? From the fire departments to the schools, to the county, you know, whether there's special taxing districts in your area or not, there's a lot of taxes in there. And the one thing that I can tell you is, for a lot of residents, taxes have not increased from the county level on their property taxes. Has other districts increased? Yes. But where a lot of that misconception comes from is, let's back up to the days of COVID, right? COVID happened, right? Lots of people bought houses. They bought houses at low interest rates. Appreciation had not kept up with where we were in today's world. House values have increased. And when assessed values go up, so do taxes. Because your assessed value times your tax rate equals what your property tax is, right? So if you're, if you bought your house for $200,000 and your tax rate was at 1%, right? Because we have a 1% tax breaker for your primary residence. So 200,000 times 1% would mean a $2,000 maximum on your homestead, okay? If four years later, your house is now $250,000 at a 1% tax breaker, you can do the math. The taxes are gonna go up. There's still a 1% tax breaker there, right? But if it's a, if it's a second home, an investment property or a commercial property, they have different tax rates. So is there things that the county council can do to work with the levy, the tax levy in Clark County? Yes. So is there things that that the county council can do uh to work with the levy, the tax levy in Clark County? Yes. Is that something that needs to be looked at? Yes. Is there other things that we need to work on, like tightening the strings a little bit? Absolutely. Um, but the one thing that I will tell you is, the Clark County tax rate hasn't went up. Has fire district rates went up? Yes. Has school tax rates went up? Yes. There's other factors there. Um, but you know what? Everything has gone up. You go to the grocery store today, I guarantee you're not paying the same prices you paid before COVID. You know, gas prices thankfully have come down. There's taxes on everything. But at the end of the day, I think we need to look at our tax code completely and figure out a new way of looking at taxes that is a tax for a lot of people, not some people, and figure out how we can bring those taxes down so people can live a moderate life and a happy life.
What other topics are important to you, and what else do you want voters to know?
You know, a- at the end of the day, I want voters to know that I'm a hard-working person. I got into this race not because I needed another job, because I wanted to make a difference, and I wanted to be a change agent. I'm like a sponge. If I want to know some information, I'm going to go out and find out what it is. Because I don't want to sit around and listen to people gripe about things that they don't know what they're talking about. I want to be that educated councilman that says, this is why this happened. I don't want to walk into a council meeting and have a rubber stamp and say, approved. I want to have some discussion on the table. Why are we spending this money? Is it needed now? Is this something for the future? What do we need to do to move Clark County forward, right? That's what they're electing us to do. Spend the money wisely to make sure that we have the infrastructure and the services to live a life and stay out of my life, right? Come to the table, be a stakeholder. Let's have a conversation. And give me your vision for what you'd like to see in your in your county, because it's your county. You're a taxpayer, just like I am, right? I'm a father. I'm a business owner. I'm a huge community supporter. And if anybody knows me, they'll know that I'm usually helping some charity, helping a school, helping an organization. Because at the end of the day, they need it most. In twenty twenty, during COVID, we built a new business, which was called Hunter Station Pizza in Sellersburg. And we have used that vehicle, that business, to support a lot of organizations, a lot of schools. Um, some people may not have been able to go on senior trips had it not been for us. We built that to be a philanthropic part of our life, right? Because at the end of the day, we have a good life. I want our, my kids and the kids in Clark County, the future generations, to have what they need to be proud of being a citizen of Clark County. I want that, that Eeyore's rain cloud to disappear from Clark County, and I want to get back to a more transparent county that we're not in the news every day, right? Our our councilmen are working hard for us. Everybody wants to come to Clark County. I want to make sure that I'm, our employees are taken well care of. They need to make decent wages. They need to have great benefits. Because they are our future. And for a lot of these county workers, they've spent their life working in county government, right? And just like if I went to my boss, which I am my own boss, if I went to my own boss and said, hey, I want to raise, why do you need a raise? Let's make sure that you get the money that you need to sustain your family and your life. And at the end of the day, I don't want to raise taxes. I think we pay enough taxes. We need to look at the tax code and figure out how we can tweak it even more. But at the end of the day, I want to be physically conservative. I'm not running for this race to to be a politician. I'm running to be a change agent in Clark County, and that's what you'll get with Chris Fox. Somebody that's not a rubber stamp, someone's going to ask lots of questions, someone's going to attend a lot of meetings to get the information so that I can make well-informed decisions. And again, at the end of the day, my name is Chris Fox, and I am running to be your next Clark County Councilman. And I humbly ask for your vote on Tuesday, November fifth, for Chris Fox or Clark County Council.
Perfect. Uh, how can voters learn more about you, support your campaign, get in touch with you? You're on Facebook, where else?
Facebook. They can go to my website, which is votechrisfox.com. Uh, they can call me on my cell phone, five oh two, four eight nine, seven eight zero six. If I don't have the answer, what I'll promise you is, I'll find the answer. Um, but I want to be your councilman. I want to be someone that says, you know what? I hear more from him than I've ever heard from my, from my elected officials for years. Because I want to be transparent. I want you to know what's going on in your county. I want you to know how your tax dollars are being spent. Because I want to be that change agent in Clark County.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for interviewing with us, Chris.
Absolutely. Thank you.